Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. We can have some quiet please in the gallery. The time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager or council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the honour of people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. To lead us in prayer tonight, we're joined by Pastor Rachel Mayne. Pastor Mayne, come forward. And I'll ask councillors to please stand for the council prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Lord God, we just thank you for this past term of council. We thank you for every person who has lent their skills and their time and their energy toward building a greater city of Cessnock over these past years of this term. And Lord God, we just pray right now as we close off this term and prepare for the next, for your blessing over our city. We pray your blessing over every heart and every home, every household, every person who resides in our beautiful city. We pray for them to know your peace and for us to work together collaboratively as a community to see our city prosper. We pray for all of the candidates and all of the staff who are planning to be with us or hoping to be with us in this next term. We take a moment to think of those who had hoped to serve but won't be able to. It's a terrible injustice, Lord, and we just pray a special blessing on those people and for them to experience your peace and your calm as well. We pray for each one of us to be filled with a sense of purpose and good work to do over these next four years. And we pray that as we work toward a united vision, that we will see our city prosper, even in the midst of difficult times. We pray that our city would be a marker of what's possible when people work together in unity and that we would be a set apart people. We thank you and pray all of this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mayne. There are no apologies. We have a leave of absence that's been granted for councillor Olson. Move on to confirmation of previous minutes. Moving that way, councillor Sander, seconded councillor Hill. No debate, we'll put that, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Disclosures of interest, are there any disclosures of interest? No petitions? No petitions, no public address. Consideration adoption of all reports by englobo? Yep, not doing that. And so we'll move on to merrill minute. MM six twenty twenty four. In regards to the Currie-Curry to Maitland Road corridor safety. I'll just speak briefly on that. In recent weeks, we've unfortunately seen the tragic deaths of two people on our roads in this corridor. This has been something that, an area that's seen significant growth in recent years, which has put a lot more traffic onto those roads. There's been plans undertaken, studies undertaken about actions that could be implemented to improve road safety and traffic movements in that area. This is a state road, it's not a council road. And so this merrill minute's about reaching out to the Minister for Regional Transport and Roads through to them to talk with Transport for New South Wales and get an update on what actions are being implemented for that area. So I'll move that way. Councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. Just like to continue on from your points in regards to the safety and the recent accidents here in this corridor. We've also seen a number of, a large number of minor accidents in key areas along this corridor between the Hunter Expressway and the Maitland roundabout. And I think that it's, it falls to us to call on the state government to come and give us an update. They place these mandates in place for our council area to meet new levels of housing and releasing new developments within our LGA. And I think it is time that they considered what else they can do to contribute to the infrastructure that's needed to support these developments. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saval. Totally hundred percent support this. And not only should we write, we should really check on this regularly because that's turned into an absolute nightmare along that stretch. It's just getting busier and busier. And with our LGA population expected to just continue to boom. It needed to be done yesterday, not tomorrow. So it's something a hundred percent back. And anything we can do to push it and kick it down the track further, faster, the better. So yeah, we just hope that no more accidents happen. Just everyone, please drive safely around there at the moment, it's not very good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Moving on to motions of urgency, are there any motions of urgency? No, we'll move to report P sixteen twenty twenty four, Development Application Performance Monitoring Report. Moving that way, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Painter. Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry. On page thirty in the highlights, council says that the DA processing days is a median fifty-one days and an average of seventy-nine days, which is performing well in relation to processing time when compared to Newcastle at a hundred and one and Lake Mac at ninety-one. My question tonight, the next report, P seventeen slash twenty twenty four, on page thirty-six says that that the objectives of the ACHMP project is to ensure Aboriginal culture heritage is appropriately considered and assessed in applications for development. Ensure appropriate best practice consultation with the local Aboriginal communities being undertaken in the development process with four more objectives that the community can read if they choose to. What impacts will that have on development applications and their timeframes, if there's any? Thank you.
Further to the Director of Planning and Environment?
Director. Thank you, through you, Mayor, councillor Judd. In some respects, it's a bit of a, how long's the bit of string? It will depend on the application and the merits of that application and whether or not it is in fact mapped and needs to be dealt with. So it could potentially have some impact on turnaround times. But the number of the applications, if you're talking about residential dwelling, new developments, that's dealt with at the planning rezoning stage, if you want to term. So it wouldn't impact on the DA assessments and the DA assessment times. So it will have some impact, but the numbers that will be impacted will be low. So on an average, it's unlikely to increase the days significantly. I do note that the state average has actually gone up quite significantly in the past six months from ninety-nine days to a hundred and fourteen. I think all councils are struggling with resource. And we've certainly made inroads into a backlog, which is why our number is higher than we'd like. But at this point, we're still performing quite well.
Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a really quick question about our pre-DA assessment offering that we give to the community. Is there any current numbers that we've got about how many people are actually accessing that?
Director.
Through you, Mayor. I can't say off the top of my head, but I'm happy to give you that data. I'm aware that some of the major DAs that we've had approved through the regional planning panel are now coming in with DAs. So certainly the more complex DAs take advantage of that. But I'm happy to provide a report to councillors on the pre-DA process.
No, thank you, appreciate it.
No further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Call on report P seventeen twenty twenty four, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Speaking councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do we know what is Aboriginal heritage land? This is a genuine, serious question. As I know, there are sacred sites, but of course, that is not all. So how does someone know or find out? When I was first asked by the mayor if I would go on the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee, I was actually excited. I seen this as a meaningful opportunity to learn more about my heritage. In the past, many individuals, including my nan, felt hesitant to discuss their Aboriginal background, particularly if they were able to pass as white. Crazy times, and so glad it's still not that way. I have only been to a couple of meetings since I joined. The first one, which didn't, wasn't, wasn't great, with someone following me out into the car park and threatening me due to my opinion on the voice. To the next two being a lot better. But I unfortunately haven't learned enough about this yet. So as you can imagine, I'm concerned about this as this document says that the ACHMP will assist landowners, council staff applicants and developers in understanding their risk of harming Aboriginal objects and places. Outlines legislative, always get stuck on that, legislative obligations and clarifies the level of assessment required with any application for development or potential disturbances. This document continues with the ACHMP stating it applies to the land in which the Cessnock LGA covering one thousand nine hundred and fifty square kilometres of the Hunter Valley region. It is home to distinctive lands, waters, parks, reserves, towns and villages stepped in history and culture, given the uniqueness of its natural assets and biodiversity. One-third of the area is recognised as a United Nations Educational, Scientific and Cultural Organisation World Heritage listed area. This document is about a hundred pages long and really needs the community to read it, understand what this document is about and put your submissions in. As I think this document will have impacts to how we do things, whether it's good or bad, I'm undecided. For that reason, I can't support it tonight, as a week is not long enough to get your head around a hundred page policy that will impact every resident. With it only being sixty days on expedition over the time council be in caretaker mode with the election, I think that this document will be forgotten about. So I'd like it to be on expedition longer than sixty days, if that's possible.
Is that a question?
Yeah, yeah, the last bit's a question. Is there a possibility to get it on there for longer than sixty days?
John, the director.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. The minimum is twenty-eight days under our community participation plan. The lengthened period was identified because we were going into an election and give us time beyond that. Pending the feedback, that would then come back to the council and you would get to reconsider and if necessary amendments made and exhibit it again if that's the want of the council. But the final determination will be a matter for the, for the chamber on that timeframe.
Okay, thank you. Make an amendment. Ninety.
Sorry. By, well, you can, anyone's entitled to move, there'd be deferred. But by deferring, it would mean the community would not get the opportunity to view and comment on it at all. So this is... Yes, but then it would... At the time later on, rather than not now. Yep. So councillor Hill, you spoke first. Well, she hasn't moved, there hasn't been a mover of a procedural motion, there was just comments.
Defer?
You're entitled to move a procedural motion to, so that's the way you're moving?
Yes, I would like to.
Is that motion seconded? And it's seconded councillor Watten. There's no debate on the procedural motion, so those wishing to defer the item. For is councillor Watten and Judd, those against? Councillor Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval all declare the procedural motion lost. Speaking councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't support this being deferred. I'd like to put it out and hear what the community have to say. I'll move that the period be extended for ninety days. I think that's more than adequate for, not only for the community have their say pre-election, but also post-election. And that will give the incoming councillors.
Can I just ask before we move on that? So there's a proposed amendment to move it to ninety days. Is the mover councillor Hill and seconded councillor Sander happy with that? Yes, they're happy to change that, so that now becomes the motion. So speaking on that...
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, just further to that, look, I've just come from the Corral Wanaroy Aboriginal Education Solidarity Group's Kullabala, Kullaburra Awards Presentation Night. And it was fantastic out at St Philip's Christian College. There were students from the Cessnock Greater Public Schools, as well as the Currie School Community honoured, acknowledged for their work. So I'm pretty sure that the Aboriginal community are well represented and that their culture is being respected and that it'll be passed on. And I look forward to some of their submissions and their input into these documents. So look, I would support going out onto public exhibition. I don't think we have anything to gain from putting this off. It's been developed for a number of months, if not years, I think. We've been sort of getting to this point where it's now time to ask the community what they think of the document. And this document will give certainty to people looking to come to Cessnock, but also looking for people looking to protect our cultural heritage. So I'm more than happy to support this going out on public exhibition. Thank you.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, just quickly, just want to, yeah, agree with that because it is such a big document. And with everything going on with the election at the moment, everyone's running around worried about everything else. So yeah, happy to support that. If we can't defer it, definitely the ninety days should hopefully suffice to give everyone enough time. It's a hundred page document and it does have a lot of information we all need to be across. So that'd be great for the community, yep.
So no further debate, we'll put the item, those in favour. It's unanimous. Moving to CC forty-five twenty twenty four. Moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Painter. No debate, put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. CC forty-six twenty twenty four. We'll need to amend this resolution to note that there are no's. Yep, no one has any motions put forward. No, we'll just let this item lapse then. Now moving on to report CC forty-seven twenty twenty four, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. No debate. Yep. Councillor Judd.
I thought you were still on the lapse one, sorry, I was listening to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got a quick question. I know I asked it at the briefing, but when I went and looked to see about the quorum with this not being a quorum meeting, it was an in-quorum meeting. Are you sure we can vote on something like that? Because a quorum is the minimum number of members of a group necessary to concentrate the group as a meeting. And a deliberative assembly, a body that uses preliminary procedures such as legislation, a quorum is necessary to conduct the business of that group. Without a quorum, no decision can be made or brought back to council. So I just would like to see that we can vote on this, like with the actual rules.
Director. Thank you, Mayor Saval. Yes, councillor Judd, we can bring it back to council. Council is the ultimate decision maker of what it is that you want to do. In relation to the meeting itself, you're right, there wasn't a quorum and there wasn't any decisions made at that. It was general discussion points around it. But ultimately, in relation to the performance review and putting that in the annual report, that's a decision for council, not for that committee.
Yeah, I understand that. That it, I mean, what the committee makes doesn't always mean that it will get voted for on here. But when I was looking it up, I actually found a lot of legislation that was saying if there's no quorum, the meeting shouldn't be held. So I just want to make sure that I'm following the legislation that says that we can.
There was no formal meeting held.
Yeah, this was a meeting slash committee.
So this year, there was no formal meeting of the committee. There was just a general discussion at the committee. And we've, as council, have been provided the information from that general discussion. And we can choose what direction we want to take from that. Whether we want to, we're just, the recommendation is that we note that it was an in-quorum meeting. Like, and we've been provided the notes from that. And then the recommendation is, also includes that the performance review be included in the annual report, which is a separate part to the in-quorum meeting. It's the notes from the meeting across the whole term, like the whole year. So it's not just specific to that meeting. So council can make a decision on either of those things. And there's no actual recommendations out of, there was no formal meeting. So there's no...
Okay. Thank you so much for explaining that, that makes me feel so much better. I actually would... Thank you.
Yeah, so Judd has the floor.
Yeah. I love that I can actually ask questions and you explain it because our name is on this document if we accept it or not. And if I don't understand it, I can't vote on it. Thank you.
Councillor Burke.
Yeah, thank you. I was just going, I was the informal chairperson appointed at this meeting and I can confirm that there was no decisions made. There was no resolutions, there was no voting. And just with this committee, it is only an advisory committee to council. They don't make decisions on behalf of committee. They advise council in lots of different ways. So yeah, I just can confirm that there was no formal. And tonight, I'm happy to support it because I'm only noting of what the discussion took place at the in-quorum meeting.
Thank you. With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. And moving on to CC forty-eight twenty twenty four, the Draft Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Community Action Plan, moving councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine.
If I could, speaking, following on from the previous action plan or heritage plan being put out on consultation, I would suggest perhaps we could amend the period of sixty days to say a period of ninety days for this plan also to give the community the additional time to review this document over the course of the election.
Yep, happy with that councillor Grine. Yep, so that's the motion put forward. Is there any debate on that item? No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Report CC forty-nine twenty twenty four, moving that way. Councillor Painter, seconded councillor Hill. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Saval, those against? Councillor Watten and councillor Judd, I'll declare it carried. Report CC fifty twenty twenty four, disclosures of interest, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. CC fifty-one twenty twenty four. Moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. No debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Councillors, we'll now move on to report WI twenty-two. Moving that way councillor Hawkins, seconded councillor Painter. Speaking on that councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to quickly ask a question about what it can track for Colburn with the signage there. Sorry, I was just trying to find where it was. So, yeah, no, I've got it up now, sorry. This, this one was deferred, wasn't it? And brought, this is coming back? Because didn't we have this where we weren't so sure because of the development application, something like that, wasn't it?
It was deferred at a previous meeting of the traffic committee and then came back to a subsequent...
The only question I've got is with that accident that just happened not long ago on Bicolby Mountain, Road Bicolby. I see that they've changed the kilometre speed from thirty to fifteen. Is there going to be, what do you call it? My brain's all frizzled tonight. Last meeting, I think that's what it is. No guardrails along this section of road with this development going in there. It's quite a dangerous road and then that car going off the side of the cliff, I think landing on its roof. It's good to see that there's going to be cement and the speed limit will be fifteen k's. To be honest, you probably can only do five kilometres along this road half the time anyway. So is there going to be guardrails? That's my question.
I'll ask the director and to just note on the speed signs, I think the thirty was put forward by the applicant and speed advisory signs under general regulations usually end in a five, rather than a zero. So that's why it was recommended to change for, by the committee to a more appropriate figure. The director can answer the guardrails.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the question councillor Judd. And to your comment, yes, it's the, the development application had put in a request for speed, sorry, for signposting around the corners. And that has been changed based on the impact, the import that was provided by the developer. To your question around safety barriers, council have the opportunity to do safety reviews on all of our roads. And given that we've had a recent accident there, there's an opportunity to do the same on Bicolby Mountains Road.
All right, awesome. Well, I'll be in touch with you about that one. Thank you.
With no further debate, we'll put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Councillor Reports, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I'd wanted to bring some info to the council here about an event that's just occurred here at the past weekend in Currie-Curry. We had the very first event of the Currie-Curry and Arts Festival that was held over Saturday night and Sunday, which, this is an event that was originally proposed by councillor Rosa Grine via a notice of motion. And council was successful in securing grant funding from the government, the New South Wales Government, to fund the event. And so the event was a pretty massive success, if I can say so, over the course of the weekend. I also just wanted to additionally express my gratitude to all of, all who were involved in getting the event off the ground. Special reference in fact to council's economic development and tourism manager, Tony Chadwick, and along with the team that supported him. And also to the local community and all who attended were critical to the success of the weekend, especially local organisations such as Currie Rotary and the Hunter Food Relief Centre, who were able to put on their own variety of curry to spice up the weekend. So if you, if you weren't able to get down to Currie, Colbrown, Rotary Park over the weekend, I've included a few photos at the end of this report as well of some of the festivities. And we, hopefully, if we, with some luck and some dedicated hard work, we may be able to put something similar on again in the future. So keep your eye out for something like that again.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, just wanted to mention, I came along to the, gosh, it was the Sunday and it was fantastic. I missed out on the Saturday. So I just wanted to also congratulate everyone involved, it was a fantastic effort. And it's actually inspiring for the other wards too. I want to see something like that at Ward C. Love to see something break Brangston Greed away. So I don't know if it'll be a curry festival or a rodeo curry festival or something, I don't know. But we've got to get something happening because it was great. It's great to see the community come together, so yeah, well done to all involved. Yep.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, I attended the Hunter Homeless Connect exhibition today in Newcastle at the entertainment centre. And it was a fantastic event. There were, I'm going to say dozens, if not hundreds of stalls and thousands of people there. It was a wonderful networking event for the brilliant services that all the organisation... for the brilliant services that all the organisations provide for people in need through homelessness and all of the other situations they find themselves in. I actually bought back with me a box of the community directories that I'm hoping I can leave and we can maybe distribute in our public buildings, our libraries and our foyer and those sorts of things, the Cycos Centre, so that people that are in need can come and we can put them in touch with the right service providers. It's a sad thing that we need them, but it's a wonderful thing that they're there to provide people when they do need help and assistance. So, yeah, I'll table this one and leave the box with the director. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hawkins. And I'd just like to echo the words of councillor Hill on the Currie-Currie in Arts Festival and thank councillor Grine for coming up with the idea, but for the council staff for actually making it happen. They did a fantastic job with that. And it was great to see so many community members turn out for this inaugural event. And, yeah, hopefully, we can continue it going forward. With tonight being the final meeting of the council term, I would just like to thank all the councillors for the work that they've done over the last term. Everyone goes into this role, I believe, to make our community a better place. And I think from the start of the term to where we leave the term, I think we've all been able to work together to make our community better. So I want to thank you all for the commitment you've shown to the organisation and shown to the community. But I especially want to thank a number of councillors that won't be returning to the council next term. Councillor Jackson, councillor Moors, councillor Dunn, councillor Burke, councillor Sander, councillor Painter and councillor Olsen. And I want to thank them for their service to our community because they've all worked tirelessly to try and make our community a better place. So thank you on behalf of the community, but thank you from me personally as well. With that, I'll hand... To councillor Sander.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly would wish to express my gratitude to all my fellow colleagues and council, council staff and all the contractors and the fantastic community we have in the Cessnock Local Government area over the past two terms that I've been serving, which is eight years. It is a journey that cannot be taken for granted. It is a massive learning curve. The experience is life-changing and it will last me for the rest of life. As a councillor, you have to achieve as much as possible to benefit the community you have represented. It can certainly be challenging at times, as some decisions are taken out of our hands due to the federal and state legislation, which often frustrates the hell out of us being a councillor. The projects as a council, we have delivered, have grown exponentially over the years, with no bigger than the last couple of financial years. It is very satisfying to me and all of my council colleagues around here to be part of a team that has seen many projects put on the ground over my tenure. The four-year delivery programme we have delivered and the yearly operational plans have seen our roads, sporting fields, recreational facilities go from strength to strength. The opportunity to successfully obtain grant funding from other government sources is a critical part of our budget process. Thank you to our professional staff who chase these grant funding opportunities on council's behalf, having their finger on the pulse, knowing what funding can be sourced. Without this funding, council would not be able to deliver great projects such as the Bridges Hill Recreation Facility, Maybury Peace Park, the upgrades to our skate park facility. Many critical road infrastructure programmes after many, past many years, and the list goes on and on. I would hope that this funding can continue to be provided by the federal and state governments, as it would be detrimental to our community otherwise. It is hoped the incoming council can work together to ensure the conduit that is currently established with these grant providers continues. The extraordinary people that have crossed my path since being a councillor are many. They are selfless and give their time freely to ensure that our community is serviced. And the likes of the rugby clubs, lines, charitable concerns. Could I have an extra minute, please? No, just a minute. Sporting volunteers and many other volunteer organisations who continue to make our community a great place to live. And I say thank you to them. I know that as councillor, you try to help as many people as possible with a large array of issues that are brought to our attention. And it has been a privilege to help members of the community over the years. New processes and procedures that change, what has been done over the years are daunting. And usually, it is the community's local representatives, such as us, that they turn to help in many cases as their first port of call. In conclusion, I once again thank you for being, given your trust to represent you as a councillor in Ward C with Cessnock City Council. Thank you.
Councillor Judd?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, I just want to say thank you for being, this being my very first term. It's definitely been eye-opening and has gave me more respect for all that put their hands up to try and make this community a better place. I want to say thank you to everyone here that has helped me learn my role as we've gone along, because it definitely is not an easy role. I am very sorry to see that a lot of you will be going, like unfortunately with the Liberals. Paul Jackson, Moors, Dunn and Painter. Would have been good to see another term with a lot of you. But I also just want to really acknowledge councillor Olsen. For twenty-four years, this is a hard gig. I don't know how he's done it for twenty-four years. And I just want to commend him for sticking it out for so long. Thank you.
Councillor Grine?
Thank you, Mayor Saval. I too would like to say special thank you to Anne Sanders, who sat next to me and babbled on for so long. And thank you for your service. And as well to the Liberal team, who we are dearly going to miss. And thank you for teaching us how to do this job together and try to help our communities best as we can. And of course, to our teammate, for Ward D, Paul Painter. It just will not be the same, mate. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you again to all councillors for their support for the organisation, support for the community and helping us deliver what we've been able to do. All the best to the councillors that are re-contesting. And with that, I will close the meeting.